This meeting to order of the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, September 24, 2024. Roll call, please.
Trustee, Briney.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
Holmbeck.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Grekwell.
Here.
McMillan.
Here. All right, well, here, if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, status of our posting of this meeting?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center in Cambridge, Post Office, Budget Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, as you can see, we are trying to televise this meeting. We've got Chuck Franklin, one of our trustees, and I believe we also have the auditors who will be joining us.
Yes.
So, please bear with us if we have any technical-
When the auditor joins us wherever we are in the agenda, we can-
We'll make a motion to move it up to current business.
Okay.
Immediate, handle immediately.
All right, and Chuck, you can see us and hear us, and all that is good?
On the clear.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's get started then with public comments, and we have an invited guest, Safe Communities, Cheryl Whitkey. Good evening, Cheryl.
Good evening, thanks so much for having me. I've been before you before, I recognize some faces. I'm Cheryl Whitkey, I'm Director of Safe Communities. We're celebrating our 25th anniversary this year, and I want to thank you for all the partnership that we've engaged in together, including the support that you've provided through all the different agencies in the village and financial support that you've provided. The Slow Down Yard signs, I noticed, are up on your website and all around town, and just appreciate that very, very much, in addition to the, I know the work that the Sheriff's Office, the Police Department does to increase enforcement around those issues. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on what Safe Communities is up to, and also to pick your brains about how we might be able to work closely together, more effectively together. We just have gone through a strategic plan, and one thing we found is that we work in these different areas of injury prevention, for example, traffic safety, elder falls, suicide prevention, opioid overdose, and there's actually a lot of inner relationships between these issues. For example, an average of three to five people die of vehicular suicide, by vehicular suicide. That's a means of suicide for three to five people in Dane County. We know that about 30% of drinking of alcohol is involved in fatal crashes. We know that older drivers who have a fall in their home are 40% more likely to also be in a traffic crash. So, there's all sorts of connections between the different areas that we work. And to give you an example of some ways that we're trying to bridge this, is there's a class called Keeping the Keys that's put on by AAA Wisconsin, the Driver Safety Group, and we're attaching that program to our Stepping On class for older adults. So, we're really trying to figure out how can we reach the same folks with maybe different risk factors through the different programs that we do. And basically, all of the programs that we're engaged in are partnerships with local communities. So, for example, the senior centers and libraries host the Stepping On class, which is an evidence-based class to reduce falls among older adults, and we've seen a 30% reduction in falls among people who take the class. We have the Recovery Coach Peer Support Program. So, that's a way where we engage people with lived experience, so people who woke up in the emergency room after an overdose or were incarcerated because of a drug problem. They're actually now in recovery, they've been trained to be appropriate with folks in their boundaries, and they're supporting people who are now waking up in the emergency rooms and getting out of jail. And we have a really high success rate with those programs. But then again, we see these connections between traffic safety issues, substance use issues. So, we're also partnering with the OWI courts to support people and help people in their recovery so that we don't have repeat OWI offenses. So, we're trying to look at basically safety across all of these different areas. We know that they're important because these are the top causes of injury in our community: suicide, traffic crashes, older adult falls, and opioid overdose. So, how can we really work together to, you know, and across all these different areas so that we're not in silos and that we can really engage everybody in effective programs? So, I, you know, I'm happy to answer questions, but I also just wanted to ask you if you had any ideas about how you think that we could support, I mean, you're clearly all about public safety. How could we support you in the work that you're doing to keep residents safe, whether it's providing more resources to you to put out to the communities through e-newsletters or other, you know, sort of resources like that? We have campaigns, obviously, like the Slow Down Campaign. You have a med drop box that was brought to us with Safe Community support and because of everything that you all do and the Sheriff's Office does. We have these oak boxes, which are overdose aid kits, that's Narcan, supplies of Narcan that are now in over 100 locations throughout Dane County, and that's on a map on the Safe Communities website. So, basically, everybody in the county is just minutes away from a free dose of Narcan. They can run into any of the EMS agencies, including here in Cambridge, and pick up Narcan. So, we've really tried to, you know, again, think sort of systematically about how we can engage all the existing agencies and partners who are working to address the issue and to provide resources. So, I don't know if folks have any thoughts or any questions specifically about Safe Community, since we've just gone through our strategic plan and we're trying to think about how to more effectively, I think, reach community members, especially across different areas of focus. I just wondered if you had any thoughts or ideas about that.
Do you have any more campaigns with signage attached to it? Because that was pretty effective from our standpoint.
Yeah, thanks. Well, we've got a couple, including, so the Slow Down Campaign, we also have one about buckling up that maybe you've seen. That's, it's a picture of a little girl on the front, and it says, "I am loved, please slow down." And then on the back, it says, "You are loved, please buckle up." We know that, you know, basically, people die of crashes, in car crashes, because they're not wearing seatbelts, they're impaired, and they're driving too fast. So, we're trying to address each of those different risk factors.
What about cellphone usage?
Yes.
Hands-free kind of thing?
Yes, so we staff the Traffic Safety Commission, which is a Dane County entity that all of the law enforcement agencies, many traffic engineering departments are part of, community-based organizations. And so, we run campaigns every year. One of them now, this coming year, because we're on a federal fiscal year for that project, is basically looking at distracted driving, and it's cellphone use is also eating, it's talking, and particularly among youth, and having focus groups with youth to ask, what kind of messaging can we do to reach people, you know, of your age group with these messages so that it's going to be effective?
Do you do anything with the smoking or vaping type situations?
So, we're more and more engaged with schools and prevention programs, and there's a really exciting program that comes out of Stanford. It's called the Reach Lab, and they do, are you familiar with it? So, we're pushing out those curricula, including the Alternatives to Suspension. You know, we have a lot of school kids that are being suspended because they're vaping or smoking, and we know that kids that vape or smoke are at much higher risk of going, moving on to other drugs. Actually, it's a greater predictor, right?
Yep.
That people are going to use other drugs if they smoke than even if they have a beer occasionally, because of the addictive quality of it. So, the Suspension to, or the Alternatives to Suspension project is really, it's just a two-hour class, and it's, okay, what are some alternatives to dealing with your stress, refusal skills, that kind of stuff, so that we don't just suspend kids, but we give them tools to basically address what they're facing and give them some resources to quit.
Awesome. Do you know if our local school does it?
I don't think anybody really is taking that on yet, has taken it on yet, but we would love to partner with you guys on that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So, I'm on the library board also, and I don't know if you've partnered at all when you have initiatives or things partnering with the library. They're a really good source for our community for getting information out, whether it's pamphlets to, you know, because they've got places where people can pick them up. Also, if it's like National Something Month, they do a lot of programming, and so if you had some sort of particular programming that coincided with some sort of, you know, National Month, our library, the director, Samantha Seemerson, would be a good one to reach out to, to partner with as well.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, thank you for coming by and giving us an update, Cheryl, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
You've given us some thought on some maybe follow-up. We're going to be meeting with the superintendent of the schools.
Okay. If I can just mention, we do receive opioid settlement funds. If you remember that all of the big opioid pharmaceutical companies were sued, and there's funds coming into local communities, basically, for prevention activities. So, we have not only the Alternatives to Suspension, we also have a curriculum we're pushing out also through the Reach Lab, Safety First, that's a harm reduction curriculum. So, it basically talks about fentanyl, how to recognize fentanyl, how to basically respond if you experience or see somebody experiencing a fentanyl overdose. And then we have, I think, a really exciting, more upstream program that's called Sources of Strength. And that is focused more on how do you get ahead of it? You know, even elementary or middle schools, so that kids have better coping skills, and it's a peer-to-peer-based program, so that basically you've got sort of ambassadors within the school with adult advisors to support kids, and they're selected by the student body, and it's, again, an evidence-based program that's shown to be really effective. So, we would love to pilot that here. We've got a couple other school districts, I think Deerfield School District is also planning on implementing it. We've got some, Amunhorab, there's some other schools that are pushing it out, but we would love to bring it here, and there's no cost to the district.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, we will now open this up to any other individuals that would like to speak. It's just public comment, if you're not already on the agenda. You could introduce yourself, please.
How long? How long?
Three minutes.
Yeah, it's three minutes.
My name is Jana Evans. I'm here to speak to a very disturbing meeting that I was at last night. It was a fire commission meeting that was supposed to be a working budget meeting. From start to finish, it was very disturbing to me. Before the meeting, the folks that processed the EMS payroll approached the treasurer of the Fire Commission and provided them bills back from 2022 that have not been paid. And the treasurer was told if those were not paid by Monday, they would stop processing payroll. Once the meeting started, it was determined after quite some time and some dispute that the meeting was not posted properly, so it was adjourned. Immediately following the meeting, Mr. Smithback, Dave Smithback on the Fire Commission, the CPA that was in attendance for the working budget meeting, and the EMS director and the deputy assistant of the EMS went in to close doors. They were in there for some time, but the rest of us left. After that, last night, during late night, 11:47 PM to be exact, the EMS director sent a budget to the newspaper reporter along with a narrative that he wrote on behalf of Dave Schrader, the president of the Fire Commission, and submitted it to the newspaper. I would really encourage you to fact-check the narrative that was sent along with the budget and use the tools available to you. One example is he said that numbers that are being circulated from 2023 were not approved by the Fire District Commission, when in fact, they were approved unanimously by the Fire Commission in June or July, I'm looking for those minutes right now, but they were approved. He speaks to a FAP grant and a FLEX grant, and that money was used for EMS and fire. I've done some research on the FAP grant. In fact, the FAP grant was for about $32,000. $18,000 of that was dispersed in 2022 to help pay for the radios, if you remember that fiasco. $12,000 of the FAP grant was dispersed in 2023. The FLEX grant, $67,500 of it was dispersed in 2022, $67,500 in 2023. And the FLEX grant application clearly reflects that the money used from the FLEX grant was strictly for EMS purchases. Again, I strongly encourage you to use your tools to fact-check everything that was disseminated in that communication. I am not sure why Mr. Blount, who is the EMS director and an employee of the Fire Commission, is writing letters on behalf of Dave Schrader, who is the president of the Fire Commission. Again, this whole Fire Commission thing seems, is very concerning and disturbing. The taxpayers need to get involved. They're talking about applying for an FDID number, which is a fire department number. The Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department already has a fire department number. There is not a need to get another one. If they do, that's disbanding the Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department. The taxpayers need to get involved and show up at these Fire Commission meetings. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, we're going to close this portion of the meeting for public comment. Moving on, item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, any concerns, questions, issues, clarification? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you, Chuck. Make sure I don't speak too fast here, okay. And we'll move on, reports, President's Report. I, a couple of things. I received an email this morning from the Director of Public Works, and he will be stepping down next Friday. He's going to be taking new employment with a neighboring community not too far away. And so, I talked with him, and he had good things to say about his time here in Cambridge. This is a good opportunity for him, and he is interested in doing that and maybe not being on call as much as he has been. So, because he will not be doing that. And so, I don't think we're going to have a report from Todd. He's with his mother today, she was in the hospital, and he was going in. I also just wanted to see what the new well station looked like, so I kind of went over there. And an impressive building and tanks, and talking with Derek and, you know, the brine and the chlorine and the size of the equipment, and I guess there's a punch list on quite a few items yet, but MSA, it looks like they're on top of that, so. It was just, you know, the punch list, he told me, was like 10 pages long, so.
I hope you weren't talking to the brine.
No, no, but I remember the brine, they had to put that in before the building was finished because it's so big.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, then the building was kind of finished around it. But then the chlorine, the way that that gets introduced, and I-
It's all intertwined.
Yeah, yeah.
It's impressive, but it might bore some people, too.
I got a kick out of it, you know, but he's working away at it and had two or three monitors up, and then he showed me the control panels, and I'm looking at that like, okay.
Star Trek?
Yeah, pretty much. But it was impressive, so he's got it underway. All right, questions? Okay, going to move on then. Historic Preservation Committee. I'll talk about this because I'm on that committee. We just had our first meeting in something like 20 years, correct, Tammy?
2006, I think.
Yeah, okay, 18. And we had five of us there.
Historic?
Yes, there was one individual that didn't make it, and we went through everything. The main thing that we are interested in trying to do, and we're looking at possibly how to get bids and what it would take to demo the water tower versus save the water tower. So, that is something that the Historic Preservation Committee is going to be working on, and there's three of us. We do have an architect on the committee.
You should probably differentiate between what water tower we're talking about.
Oh, yes, well, yeah, it's well, the water tower that's up on South Street here, at the very end. It's just a water tower, I know it's been disabled, and there's nothing inside of it. I had gone to Fort Atkinson and looked at theirs, and trying to get some ideas because it just seems a shame to let that thing go and go and go. And then I was reminded that we had a Historic Preservation Committee, and maybe we should be running it through there. So, I think, Lisa, you're the one that told me about this, and so we decided to put the committee back, and we're off and running, we've got something that, you know.
And the committee will bring their recommendations to the board, and then the board decides? Or does the committee act independently of the board?
Board.
No, they will be.
Okay, thank you.
They discuss that, that they're going to put something together that-
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's the Preservation Committee, Historic. Library Board Update.
Derek, are you there?
I am here.
I'm here.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
You got to make a motion.
All right, this is working as it should, then, that's great.
Okay.
Just do a motion to move you up in the agenda and-
So, hold on just a second.
I will hold tight.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion? With our 2023 audit under new business?
I'll make a motion to move up the 2023 audit to where we're at right now on the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second have been made, all those in favor? Are you saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right, now.
All right.
Hold on just a minute here, we're going to pass out the copies.
Perfect. Okay.
Which one are you going to start with, Eric?
I'm going to start with the, there's a couple letters. I'm going to start with the letters first and work my way up into the full financials.
Okay, thank you.
And if you'd like, I could share the screen, you're calling that.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, that's great, actually.
Folks here can see it.
Okay, perfect. Teams is, I'm pretty good with Teams, you know, watch this, I'll mess it up, but. All right.
Perfect.
Can you all see that?
We can.
All right. How about that? Can you, do you need me to blow it up a bit?
Can you blow it up a little bit?
How about there?
The video knows you're looking at silver, but it can't see any text.
It's all good.
Yeah.
It's good?
Yep.
So, this letter here is our required letter to the board at the conclusion of the audit. So, these headings are required communication points. And this letter is the letter you received last year, and a letter you've pretty much received for the last several years from your auditor. So, I'll go through it real quick here. Significant audit findings, and under there, some subitems qualitative aspects of accounting practices. This is where we tell you about any changes in the accounting policies or any new standards. There was a new standard this year, it was GASB 96, which deals with subscription-based IT arrangements. And when we went through our audit procedures and evaluated the villages, the acronym is SEVITAS. When we evaluated those SEVITAS, there was nothing material that required any conformance by the village. So, it really was a standard that didn't affect the village. So, we tell you about it, but I'm also telling you there was no, there were no significant transactions that affected anything. There were no other new accounting policies adopted, and the application of existing policies was not changed. Accounting estimates, these estimates are the same ones as noted in prior years. With the capital assets shown in the financial statements, depreciation is a very big estimate. We review those estimates of useful lives, and, you know, we make inquiries about whether there's any impaired assets, we go through and update that, and reductions in disposals. Depreciation, we found that to be reasonable. Net pension asset information, with your involvement in the WRS, you're subject to GASB 68, which requires the village to record disproportionate share of the net pension asset or liability. And we review the reports made publicly available on the Wisconsin Department of Employee Trust Fund's website, review that, proposed calculations, and help you adjust and allocate your share of that. So, there are quite a few estimates involved there, although those are actuaries that are hired by the state. We reviewed that, we did some census testing of the village, and that all checked out. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit, if there was anything to report, we would put that here in all actuality. If there was anything that was really concerning, we would have reached out to a board member before this letter, but as a matter of course, we report that. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, during the year, there was one misstatement we noted for $15,899. That was just to record additional accounts payable. And then we noticed last year, we had not recorded some work in process for the government-wide statements for $36,521. I will say, '23 compared to '22 was definitely an improvement, but when we do note adjustments, we report them here. Disagreements with management, if there was anything here, we reported here, there was nothing to report. Management representations, at the conclusion of the audit, we get a management representation letter, we're telling you that here. Management consultations with other independent accountants, if any of that was going on, we would have an obligation to report that to you, there was none of that. That we noted, other findings and issues, it's kind of a catch-all, there's really nothing to report here. Other matters, there are required supplementary information schedules, and we note them here. Those are required by GASB standards, and we're just reporting that here in our communications with the board. And that's that letter, are there any questions on that letter before I move on? Pretty standard stuff. All right, the second letter, this is the required communication of internal controls efficiencies as we go through the audit. Again, the purpose of an audit isn't to look for, you know, perfect internal controls. We obtain an understanding of internal control to plan the audit, and then if we notice anything, we report it here. So, these are what was noted when we ran through our audit procedures. An adequate segregation of duties, this is an existing one and will probably continue. In reality, unless you have a larger village staff internally to segregate these duties, you're more than likely always going to have this. Again, board oversight, other mitigating controls help keep this in check. It's a very common finding for our smaller municipality clients, so I'm sure if you check with your neighbors, you'll probably find that they have this similar tech comment in their audit reports.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What would be, in a perfect world, an adequate segregation of duties?
To me, that would involve probably about three things, right? So, you've got your custody over an asset, you've got your ability to record it in the general ledger, and then you also have the authority to actually consummate a transaction. So, you're really trying to segregate that out. You know, as an example, well, here, let's just go through what's in the letter, there are some things noted. You know, the bank reconciliations prepared by the treasurer, however, they are not reviewed by another person. I mean, that would be a simple, easy, correctable fix, and Tammy- And Tammy and Lisa, that may very well have already been, been put in place. I don't know if you could speak to that?
No. Right now, no, it's.
Yeah.
Okay. But what it is, is it's just trying to separate the custody over the assets, over the ability to record it. And then, you know, if you have the ability to actually consummate a transaction, kind of have control over all three of those phases, that's, that's really kind of where the concern comes in from an internal control standpoint.
I can give a couple of examples that we've tried doing over the last couple of years. The guys, Public Works, will code their bills as they come in. Judy will enter them. Tammy and I will verify the bill runs before they're presented to you guys who then have final oversight to look at them. So we try to have numerous eyes looking at things. Payroll, the same thing. Supervisors will verify the time sheets. Judy will enter them, put them in. I will verify time sheets and the pay as it's processed through the system before it is posted. And so we, we try the best we can. Then Tammy, or Tammy will do the payments to the state. And, you know, so we try kind of splitting it out the best we can with a small staff. So in some of the areas we are, we're trying, there's other areas we can continue. But those are a couple of examples of how we've tried to, to segregate it.
All right, thank you.
Did that adequately address your question?
It did. I just been on the board for a while and that seems to be the one that always is, is there, so.
But the ones, the examples he has this year are different than what I've seen in previous years. So we have addressed, so some of them from previous years, as Lisa mentioned, we have been addressing them as, you know, as we can figure out a way to do that with our current staffing.
Yeah, I, I, I do think improvement is being sought where possible. It's just, it's awfully difficult, you know, basically two people, you know, Tammy and Lisa. I know there are others involved. I think they're segregated out as best they can be. But, you know, the board oversight is good. And reviewing those things at your board meetings, I think is definitely, and that's pretty standard for most municipalities in the state.
All right, thank you.
I think number two, preparing drafts for the financial statements and notes. So you're relying on the audit firm to prepare, well, the full audit report that we'll go over using, using the village's information. You're relying on our knowledge of GASB statements to put that together, to kind of interpret all the financial data that, you know, the village has and put that in a form of financial statements that are sufficient to pass with a, a now modified audit opinion. So that's just a, it's a controlled deficiency. Ideally, we would just be reviewing these statements. In reality, almost every small municipality has their auditors do this. So it's, it's a condition that exists and we need to report it as such. As I say, they're at the bottom there, you know, with several highly technical GASB standards. I think we are up to GASB one oh five now. You know, really, there's a lot of reliance on the audit firms to, to kind of put these together. So it's pretty common. Any questions on that one?
Nope, keep going.
Okay, material audit adjustment. Again, as mentioned in that previous letter, there was a larger adjustment for thirty-six thousand five twenty-one. That was, you know, just for recording the construction work in progress, more of a timing thing. Between the years, it doesn't have any impact. But it was material enough to, in our judgment, require a prior period adjustment. Those are the controlled efficiencies that were defined as material weaknesses. And again, the delineation of what that is, is set up in this letter here. Material weakness is a deficiency or combination such that there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement will not be prevented or detected. They're just higher, higher degree of a controlled deficiency. But these ones are significant deficiencies, which are kind of a lesser adjustment. And then the, the smaller adjustment is put in this class. So I believe this letter is, they cleaned up from last year. So there was definitely some improvement with, you know, Tammy definitely having a full year with the village. Those are the controlled efficiencies reported in that letter. Any questions? All right, I'm moving on to the.
I guess I have one question for Tammy or Lisa. Can you speak to this thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars? Would that, give us some specifics on that?
Eric, can you answer that one actually about the thirty-six?
I can. I'll have to look in our files. I believe it was just noted during testing that it was really just a, probably a payment at the end of one period. Can I follow up on that one?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Yep, I will definitely do that, but I'll need to do just a little digging. It's been a little while since I've been in the file. Don't have that one committed in memory, sorry.
Something that was like dated in January that should have been dated a year before.
Okay.
And I really do believe it is, is probably just a timing issue. I will, I will look at that and follow up.
Thank you.
Yep. So onto the audit report. So for municipalities and all governmental entities, when you have more than, you know, one opinion unit, we have opinions, kind of unlike any other audit report you've ever seen, really. So we do offer, we do make opinions on opinion units, which are labeled here. I think the good news is after all of our audit procedures and proposed adjustments, we did find all the opinion units to be fairly stated. So it's an unmodified clean opinion. And the rest of this is really just pretty standard audit report language. Really nothing out of the ordinary here. No big, no changes from last year. Required supplementary information. Again, this is where we point out, you know, what listed here falls into the required supplementary bucket per GASB standards. And then we also find out that, you know, in a perfect world, if you were to do all of the GASB requirements, you would do something called the management's discussion and analysis and predating even our involvement with the village. That has not been done. A lot of smaller municipalities don't do those. They, they do take up quite a bit of time. We're just telling you that GASB requires that as RSI. The village has chosen not to report that and our opinions are not affected by this. And then there's supplementary information, which isn't required by GASB, which is optional. And that supplementary information is listed here as the breakdown of the non-major funds. I guess before I dive into these, because there's a lot here, and I could really go down in the weeds.
Hey, Eric.
Have you had a chance to review this? Do you have some questions on the financials that I could answer?
Hey, Eric.
Yeah.
I have a question. I don't know if you can hear me.
I can.
You were talking in this, I don't remember, it's called management review meeting, that the village has declined to do that, which is typical with other villages.
Yes.
Would you recommend that's something we start?
I really, I really struggle to see the value in a smaller municipality. It's about ten pages. It does summarize kind of some of the high-level type things that are in these financial statements. It does prepare some comparative information. It does speak in length about capital assets and long-term debt. It also would take a look at currently known facts and kind of a little bit of commentary maybe on some of the bigger items that occurred during the year. Speaks a little bit about, you know, where you are in relation to the budget. It is, it, there is quite a bit of time effort in it. So a lot of municipalities kind of choose to cut that out because it, it saves them internal time and also saves them some time and fees for the audit.
Thank you.
So if, if you don't deep dive, is there anything on the actual report that you want to call out to our attention? Anything we should pay, pay attention to specifically?
There are a few things. I mean, and one thing that, that sticks out, I think, to anyone reading this is, and I'm on page six, okay? The general fund, fund balance over the last couple of years is really taking a hit. And I think that just sticks out. I don't think that is anything that, you know, that isn't probably noticed. There is a larger amount due, if you look on the balance sheet here for the general fund. There's a larger amount due from other funds. And a big part of this four seventeen is sitting in the capital projects fund. So in reality, the capital projects fund should be paying some of that back to the general fund. The other thing that sticks out, and I know it, it's something that's, you know, out there, is the bike trail receivable for the grant. Well, that was like three hundred and some thousand last year. There was a collection this year and at the end of twenty-three, we're still owed a hundred and forty-four thousand for that. The project, I think, came to about four hundred and fifty thousand. So it wasn't a small project.
Which I.
So those things, go ahead.
Which I do believe this year, we received some funding for that for, so in twenty twenty-four.
Did you receive the rest of the receivable because the grant was submitted and, and recorded as a receivable? Is that, when you say received additional funding in twenty-four, was that receiving the balance of the receivable?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, okay. Just to be clear, because otherwise funding, someone might think maybe that was an additional revenue source as opposed to collecting receivable. Okay. Which would be expected, that it would be booked and eventually paid back. But I mean, I think that will help the general fund, you know. So the capital projects fund, I mean, that's, think about what, what funds a capital project fund. You're either putting money away over time, which is very hard to do with levy limits, or you're taking out long-term borrowing to pay for specific projects that line up with a capital improvement plan. So eventually, you know, there's going to be borrowing to cover that and pay back the general fund. And believe you guys work with Ellers, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and I know they're really good with, with this type of thing as well and, and helping with that. The reality is for most municipalities, again, because of the levy limits, you really end up borrowing quite a bit for your non-utility type of capital assets, which is infrastructure, roads, if you have bridges, those big ticket items. Equipment, if you have large pieces of street machinery, all of that stuff. It's just what I've seen with a lot of clients, unfortunately.
And just so the board knows, I have reached out to Brian at Ellers. He hasn't gotten back to me. It's a real busy time of year for them to maybe help us come up with some sort of solutions to get out of this situation and to make a little bit further down the road. Okay, sorry, Eric.
Oh, no, no problem. But that's, that's the balance sheet right there. You know, the general fund and capital projects fund, to me, when I look at this, kind of stick out. I want to look at the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balances. I guess similar to a profit and loss statement. Where you can see for the general fund, bringing in revenues of almost a million five with expenditures of about a million eight. So that is, that's just kind of driving a deficit. The big factors that I can see over time are just, there's some increases in some of the public works function. I know last year, there was a large engineering bill in the public works function for about forty-seven thousand for some engineering. And the other thing is the developer payments that you have that are not, you know, they're not part of a TID, so they come out of the general fund. I think the largest one would be the Vineyard one.
Yes.
I think that has increased a hundred and thirty-four thousand from twenty twenty-one. So that's, that's in here and that's, that's helping also drive that. Those are the, those are the biggest things we could see when we kind of ran analytics on it.
That developer's agreement this, this year for twenty twenty-four was over two hundred thousand.
Okay. Down the road, I might have some tax breaks, but right now, it's, it's, it's another payment you have to fit in with the, within the levy limits.
But it's equal to what we collect, so there's no, it doesn't affect the deficit. We're only paying out what we collect. So it's not driving.
I don't know that it's, and I'd have to look. I don't know that it's apples to apples, is it? And, and you have levy limits, so that would.
Well, no, I've been.
If it's further limited.
I've been told several times, we only pay out what we collect each year. So unless that's bad information, it should have no impact on the, on the deficit.
I'd have to double check the calculations, but I believe, and it's noted in the commitment footnote, which I'll jump to here. I think the amount is capped at, okay. The number that's going to be paid back over the whole term is a million, just over a million dollars. And it looks like the receivable amount left on that is four hundred and thirty-one thousand. So it's getting paid down. I think it's probably due to be paid off maybe earlier than the seventeen years that.
Yeah, I think we only have a couple of years left.
Yep. And, and it, and it states right there that the village's commitment for reimbursement is capped based on the share of collected tax revenue for the development.
So it's not affecting the deficit?
Correct.
But when you stop paying that out, then that's going to definitely help the village.
Oh, yeah, we can't wait.
You'll still be collecting that. So it is, I mean, it is in essence, kind of, you know, holding you back. And to my knowledge, I don't think that amount is running outside of the levy limit worksheet, which, you know, it should be captured maybe in the net of the construction, really. But then you're not getting that to pay for other things that, you know, are subject to the increases that most things these days are subject to.
Couple more years.
Eric, can you speak to the, the increase in, in public safety from last year to now? When we're talking about expenditures here?
Talking about public safety?
Yes.
Let me look really quick. Yeah, the EMS fee, I'm seeing that this year was two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Last year it was two hundred and three thousand. So that's an increase in the public safety expenditure line item of forty-seven thousand.
All right.
And then also some of the plumbing and building inspections. That line item went up by about twelve thousand, but that's, that's the big one there.
What's a big one?
The EMS.
Yeah, yep. Definitely.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, that's almost twenty percent.
Well, I think since we just got this, we need to review it. I don't think we need to go through it.
We've, we've had it electronically for like two weeks. So, um, for those of you who actually reviewed the electronic version, do any of you guys have any questions for Eric?
I had a couple.
All right.
On page six, the balance sheet you were referring to earlier. Um, there's a couple of items. I just want to make sure I understand them. So, it relates to taxes. There's a taxes receivable line in the asset part. And then down below, there's a taxes levied for subsequent years. So, if you look in the.
That's correct.
If you look in the library fund column, it's easier to see it, but there's a hundred and five thousand and a hundred and five thousand and those offset all the way across. So, that represents, um, in this case, the twenty-four tax bill that was sent out the end of December twenty-three. And because it's mailed out, you're setting that up as a receivable and a payable. Am I understanding that correctly?
We're setting it, we're setting it up as a receivable and then the deferred revenue, what you're seeing on the other side, right? The taxes levied for subsequent year?
Yeah. So, basically offset, other than general fund, number didn't offset.
Exactly. And that's because the advanced tax collections that are, the villages share are shown as a credit to the receivable and because it's cash.
So, in effect, then the difference in those two is taxpayers that paid twenty-four taxes in twenty-three by five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, why don't I see that in the cash balance of five hundred thousand? It's only twelve thousand.
Because it's negative by the difference of that. It's, it's borrowed money out to other funds.
So.
Because you just pooled cash.
So, we spent twenty-four tax money to pay our twenty-three bills, is what you're telling me.
There's a deficit in that cash, yeah. And that, those tax bills are in there, yes.
So, basically, it's funding our unassigned fund balance at the bottom of the page. Two hundred and ninety thousand in general fund.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, seven thousand in debt service, a hundred and ninety thousand in capital, and a hundred and thirty-five thousand deficit in all our other funds. And that's pretty, pretty alarming to me. We're spending next year's taxes on this year's expenses. Then on page eleven, same thing again. Um, if you look at the bottom, change in net position, these are three other big funds, the utilities. Again, we're spending more money every, in all three of the four funds by quarter million dollars. Again, alarming as a taxpayer and embarrassing as a trustee.
This, this water and sewer has nothing to do with taxes? The water and sewer stuff is the ratepayers for the water and sewer.
It's our constituents and we're responsible for it.
But, but, but it's, but it's not taxes, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, fine. I agree.
Okay, it's ratepayers.
Still embarrassing. Then, um.
One thing, I mean, one thing with that, I believe, is there not a rate case that's, that's currently underway or has been developed? Because I think there's a, a large well project.
Yeah.
With the water, right?
Yes, correct. And that's, yeah, and the, and, and the villages are, the village ratepayers have already seen the increase that, based from the PSC recommendation of what we needed to increase. So, that's already taken effect.
So, that will be in twenty-twenty-four's.
Yep.
Then on page forty.
And then I guess to, sure, that, just, if I could point something else to on that work paper or that page, the operating income for the water utility is positive, but, you know, there's interest expense. And the bond issuance costs, those are period costs, that's non-recurring. Shouldn't be seeing that again in the future, although there was some refunding. So, I can't speak to that exactly. There might be some costs with that refunding. But those are non-recurring. But I, I mean, your point, I understand your point, though. I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm just trying to also take a look at that operating income and loss line as well. And the sewer is totally issuing a negative, um, operating loss. So, I, you know, that again speaks to are the rates sufficient or the costs are allocated out appropriately? And the sewer is not regulated, so.
No, those are good comments. Thank you. Makes sense.
Yep. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine. And then on page forty-four, I see footnote fifteen is a new footnote you added this year, as far as I could tell. You're delineating all our negative deficit fund balances in tune of like six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's required when their material gas standards require that those are specifically disclosed.
Yeah. So, obviously, you're more concerned about it this year than you were last year because you added the footnote.
There were larger balances this year, yes. You're correct.
And then the two sentences under there, the last sentence, "The village expects to recover these deficits through future incremental tax levies and interim government aid." Is that just a wordsmith thing you put in or was there conversations had with anybody in the village about that? Because we've not had that.
There were conversations, because we send the drafts and we point out things. And I know I had pointed this out as being a pretty sensitive item. Um, so it was reviewed and that's really kind of where.
I'm surprised it never came to the trustees, because this is a huge number. When you think about, we only collect what, a million one in taxes a year? And yet we got six hundred thousand deficit? So, that, you answered my question there.
Eric, I've got a couple of questions for you. Um, on page twenty-four, your custodial credit risk deposits. It says that the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three bank balance of the village was six million, two hundred and ninety thousand. I've looked over this balance sheet and I'm not seeing that.
I believe a lot of that was due to the unspent bond funds of well number three. Do you may need to look at the utilities for that?
Okay.
And if you look at page ten, you'll see a front rather large line item there, restricted cash and investments in the water utility. That's definitely part of that number.
Okay, because it, it just looked like we had six million, three of cash on hand and we only had insurance up to whatever, four hundred thousand. And I thought we had done something with the bank and they were going to go ahead and get in a special insurance policy?
We have an agreement with Jager Bank about that.
Yeah.
We've talked about that multiple years.
Yeah, but I.
Yeah, and, and they are collateralized. I mean, if you look further on that page twenty-four, that's really what we're saying there at the very bottom. So, there are securities that are pledged to collateralize that. They're just not insured. They don't fall in the category of being insured.
Right. Five million, three hundred thousand is not insured.
But it is collateralized with pledged securities. So, while it's not the same level of assurance as insurance, it's, it is something and that's about, that's about all you can do short of opening up accounts with different financial institutions to spread that out.
Okay.
Because the FDIC coverage is so, is so low in comparison to the size of that deposit.
All right.
So, in effect, the bank owns securities in different, whether it's government securities or private, and they're pledging those securities to the Village of Cambridge.
That, that's exactly.
And they can't pledge those same securities to more than one entity, can they?
They can't. That's, that, that's what, and they're specific. We have in our, our file, and you have it on file too, we receive it from the village. It is a list of specific securities pledged as of a certain date. And they update that throughout the year, I believe. I don't know how often. Lisa, how often do they update that?
I don't know for sure. I'd have to look. Um, but to touch on something you did say, Eric, the interim financing that we had for the well project was in the general fund once we received the.
Grant.
The state loans and so forth and that was paid back. So, that money was sitting in the general fund and was the interim funding for the well project.
Okay. Um, Eric, you kind of talked about this already, but how long can the Village of Cambridge continue on? I mean, we're running with these operating deficits. Uh, how much longer, I'm, I'm talking now years, before this affects your opinion?
That, that's a great question. And I like to tell you, I just give you an answer, but we look at other things too. There is a receivable, you know, from other funds. Um, what it's probably going to imply, I can't answer that definitively. Yes, it's, it's not a great trend. I think you want to look to try to stop that trend, try to look at some of the factors driving that and correct it. I wouldn't guess a whole lot of years, but I don't know that that's, if you look at a couple of years and you pay off that vineyard agreement, you're going to be gaining some just on that alone. But I really do believe this is one of those instances, and I know Tammy said she's reached out to Ellers, where they have a lot of pretty good solutions for that too. Are you, are you financing capital? Is that, you know, are you using, are you using current general fund operating, you know, revenues to fund capital? That, that can be a drain. Um, a lot of municipalities have seen, you know, dwindling fund balances. You're not the only one. It's, it's to a degree, so it's above levy limits.
So, Eric, this is Bill again.
Yeah.
Um, maybe to help answer Mark's question, I'm guessing we're going to be two to three hundred thousand unfavorable in twenty-four easily. Because we budgeted two hundred thousand for the receivable from the bike funds, even though you told us we couldn't do that, but we went ahead and budgeted that as a revenue item. So, next year that won't be there. And we're running probably a hundred thousand high in our expenses so far this year. So, if we end up three hundred thousand unfavorable, would you give us a qualified opinion next year?
We would certainly, we would certainly consider that as part of any audit. We look at the trends, we look at where you are, are at from a fund balance and we would decide. We would look at other factors besides just those numbers. But would it be an issue that we look at? It could be, yes.
Okay. One last question, Eric.
Sure.
Your audited report, uh, the first page, final paragraph, "In preparing the financial statements, management is required to evaluate." Who is management and have you communicated with any of the trustees, including those that are on the Audit and Finance Committee? No, okay.
So, management would not include those on the board.
All right.
In my opinion, because our first letter, as you'll notice, due just to the board, trustees, whereas this letter is to the village board and management. But I do know that we present the audit and we discuss these things. So, no, I do not consider that by the strict definition. I think management would be administrator employee type person.
All right.
And, and the reason it didn't come to the Audit and Finance Committee first is because, once again, we got it so late in the year. I didn't want to delay it coming to the full board by having Audit and Finance have to review it first.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions for Eric?
So, actually, not on the audit. I, I just have a question on why it took us so long to get it this year.
I believe we had some, and walk me back on the timeline. Was it May that we had Workhorse kind of come in and fix the reconciliation?
No, it was before that.
Yeah, because I thought you guys had everything you needed, like in, in, in a May timeframe. And so, it seems really odd to me that we wouldn't have gotten the results of this until.
I mean, we talked about this last November when you reported the report. You said we should have it in April, March or April, and here we are in almost October.
Yeah.
And when I asked our administrator what the delay was and they were none aware of any issues that were delayed it. They said maybe you had a turnover in personnel.
No, not a turnover. Maybe it could be lack of personnel.
Or lack of, yeah, whatever.
I talked to several other communities and this is.
I mean, it's concerning when we get it so late, because frankly, we, we don't know a lot until we get the audit report. And now the year is two-thirds over and we're, and we're over budget and our deficits are climbing and we're out of control.
Any comments, Eric?
I, to a degree, some of it's the staffing. But I, I do know, and I want to look at when, I know that reconciliation issue was like May. And then, yeah, I mean, I, I think some of it just was a little bit a little late, probably on our end a little bit.
Yeah, I think I was working with Workhorse. It was like in April to get it all completely done. I think that was taken care of like within a week.
It was, it was. It was early May.
Eric, is there any reason for the non-CPAs on this board to be as concerned as the CPAs on the board?
I think it's worth looking at, right?
Yep. I, I understand your term analysis.
And we see the numbers.
Right.
Okay. And we, we render an opinion and we opt out with some, some accounting assistance.
Right.
I, I think you should look at it.
Yep.
There are options. If, if you're truly operating that way, there are, you know, it's not popular. But your options are, can you go to referendum? Can you increase the taxes that way?
Mm-hmm.
Is there something in those expenditures that could be cut?
Right.
I guess all of it could be looked at, quite honestly.
Yeah, we've already gone to referendum and we get, we, we already have a referendum that we get ninety-five thousand dollars more over the levy limits every year. So, I think it'd be tough for us to go and ask for more at this point, but.
But to your point, Paula, if we had maybe gotten a little early, we could, we could plan accordingly.
Yep, yep.
All right. So, the sky isn't falling. You know, we're, we have some things that we need to discuss with Ellers. Uh, and Ellers can point us in the right direction on how to get us back into favorable light, but.
I, I, I think, I think one of the things that was pointed out was that whole capital thing. I think we have paid for capital out of.
General.
General fund, when we should have been taking loans for those instead, because it's a capital outlay.
Yeah.
And so, I think that, over the years, has what, has kind of gotten us into this position.
I got you.
So, I, that's one of the things that I think we need to be really, and Eric pointed that out about where, you know, are we spending general fund on capital items where there would be different funding sources that we should be using for capital items?
That would benefit in the levy limit.
And that will benefit the levy limit. Yep. Yep.
All right. Okay, Eric, we appreciate you coming before us this evening. You've got a couple of things that you're going to follow up on for information. If you could get that back to Lisa, then that can get distributed to the Board of Trustees. And.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other final questions, comments on the audit?
Appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you for your service, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, thank you. Yep, have a good night.
Okay.
What would be an appropriate timeframe?
Okay. Yeah. Chuck, you all right? You still there with us?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I guess I have an item for a future agenda that.
Yeah, let, hold on off on that one. We're, we're not right there yet. Okay, moving. Moving back onto the agenda, I think we were looking for the Library Board. Yes, please.
And unfortunately, I had a conflict. I made the last part of the Library Board where we were talking about budget, and we got our budget numbers to Tammy. Just preliminarily, the library is not asking the village for any more money than they gave the library last year. So we'd be, the library's looking for getting that equal amount for what we gave the library this year.
Okay. All right. I guess we'll move on then, and thank you for that. Director of Public Works, Todd, I think I mentioned earlier, is not here this evening. Lisa, is there anything that you can think of that he wanted to talk about?
No, I didn't have a chance to talk to him.
When is Todd's last date?
The fourth.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Cody, you don't, you're not aware of anything that we should be up to speed on, are you, from Todd's perspective?
No, off the top of my head, no.
Okay, that's fair enough.
They've been working on line painting. Going brush pickup and so forth. We're going to be starting the leaf pickup.
Flushing hydrants was brought up on
I just walked by a really bright red fire hydrant over by the, on my way here tonight, over by the bridge. That looked good.
For what it counts, I noticed a lot of leaves at the collection basins on the streets. And I think they're with hickory nuts too. And the rain kind of washed it and that stuff, we usually get the street cleaner to go through.
Has to know, but, yeah.
All right.
Yes, we've been taking the streets we brought recently to clean out the covers and the cat bases.
Yeah. All righty. Okay. Let's move on. Village office updates. Lisa.
My mind is, I'm like, we've been working on a lot of different things. We did close out the August election. November is in swing. Military and overseas ballots have gone out, absentee ballots. The remaining absentee ballots that we have requested to date will be going out later this week. Working on a lot of big ongoing projects. Dancing Go will be on the agenda. The regionalization, one sewer has been, talked about that. That's been a lot of back and forth going on with that. The fire in EMS. As Mark said, Todd did give his resignation. So again, later in the agenda, requesting a Personnel Committee meeting to look at how we'll move forward with that. There's just a lot of ongoing projects that, some of which are on the agenda, but
We have, there's no complications with the absentee ballots, correct?
No.
Nothing?
When does early voting start?
The Tuesday, two weeks before the election.
Thank you.
October twenty-second.
October twenty-second, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
But any requests that have come in to be mailed out will be mailed out as they come in, no?
Okay.
Lisa, I'd like to make a note, just to thank you for your staff meeting with me last week, getting me all set up. So just like to make a note, you guys are very busy over there, so thank you for taking the time.
No problem. That's what we're here for.
Okay. Moving on. Item seven, Treasures Report. Tammy, let's start with bills.
All right. The bills over five thousand. Dean Health Plan was eight thousand six dollars thirty-three cents. Bill in the Deerfield, eighteen thousand seven hundred sixty-six and thirty cents. And Associated Bank for the bonds, two thousand fifteen acres of interest, five thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. So the first run of bills was thirty thousand nine seventy-four and eighty-four cents. The second run, seventeen thousand nine hundred and eleven cents. So the total for all of those this time is forty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of forty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll second.
Are you sure the bills are eighty, are forty-eight thousand eight seventy-four? When I add the thirty thousand nine seventy-four to the seventeen thousand nine eleven, I come up with forty-eight eight seventy-four.
Forty-eight eight seventy-four ninety-five. That's what it was.
Forty-eight eight seventy-four.
No, I said, yep. Forty-eight eight seven four point nine five.
Okay.
I carried an extra one.
Yeah. I need my phone to do a calculation. All right.
I get a CPA?
Yeah. Stands for Couldn't Pass Arithmetic. Okay. That's on my end.
Numbers drain.
Bill. Yeah, no, I, he'll be upset. Do we have any questions, concerns on any of the invoicing here that we have? We're good to go? Okay, roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Colman Beck.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Crackwell.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay. Bills are paid.
I have one other treasure item I'd like to bring up. I'd like to make a motion. I brought this up last year to the Finance Committee, but nothing came of it. But Cambridge is not following the State of Wisconsin statutes as far as financial disclosures in our budget document. So I'd like to make a motion that Cambridge follows state statute sixty-five point nine oh for budgets to ensure full disclosure of village finances to our taxpayers, specifically Section two A and four B, where you're required to show prior year actual expenses and fund balance detail.
Bill, is this, would this be better under a future agenda item?
Yeah.
Which would be to our budget.
I think they should go, because it
I want to do it, but just
Well, I would like to have more information on
I provided it last year during our audit meetings.
I, I would like to have the staff be able to address what parts we're deficient in or, and
All you have to do is read the statute and look at it, it's pretty obvious.
Okay, why don't we just
Yeah.
Why don't we put that in?
Is this the budget notice that's published? Is that what you're referring to? So
The perfect example, if you look at the Village of Deerfield, look at their budget package, they, you see. I mean, it's, they do a great job. We should be emulating something like that.
Okay. I'll come back around.
We're not following state statutes.
He's got a motion out there, we got a second.
Well, I don't
Unless you want to recant your motion.
Hold on. He shouldn't have made the motion because it's not an item on today's agenda.
I agree. I think if we have, if we want a discussion, it should be
Yeah, this would come under a future agenda item.
Later on. Okay. All right. Going back to Tammy, anything that you want to share with us right now? Any observations?
I've been doing extensive work with the budget.
All right.
Getting the spreadsheets all up to date, making sure that the numbers from audit are on there and everything's up to date. So I'll be working with Water and Sewer to get them a budget. I've been having a hard time getting hold of, getting Derek to come in because he's been so busy with all three of them. Working on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on. New business. We've already covered A, which is the 2023 audit. So we'll go to B, street use permit, Billstad Road, South Central Landscapes.
I'll make a motion to approve the street use permit for Billstad Road for South Central Landscapes. A second.
Okay. And then we have questions. Kayla, what is that about? Are you, you're, I know it's closed for like an hour and a half, but can you just tell us what you're doing?
Sure. We're doing a construction project at a residence located at two thirty Billstad Road. And there's a turn from, I think it's South Street onto Billstad Road. And it's a really tight corner, and I've been having trucks that are having a problem making that turn adequately. So I'm having a large delivery coming on October fourteenth in the afternoon. That's going to be a larger truck than the previous trucks that have already had issues. So I would just like basically unstructured use of that corner. I think I put in the permit application that I thought the street, we'd actually be using the street for like forty-five minutes approximately.
Yeah.
Driver is coming from Indianapolis. That's why I have like a two-hour timeframe, just because I'm not sure exactly what time he's going to get there. But I basically just want unstructured use of that, that corner from South Street to Billstad Road.
Okay. Have we done anything with the neighbors? I'll get to you, Joe, because I thought about that, to just to let them know that there might be a, we're closing that road down or it will be potentially closed?
Have I done anything?
Yeah, or have we? You know, if they're planning on leaving their house to go downtown and get coffee or buy groceries?
We have not because the board hasn't approved it. And I can't have sent anything out until
Do we think we need to do that or anything?
If, if it's approved, we can.
Okay.
And just for some clarity as well for the board, I, if, if this delivery gets done quicker, I'm more than happy to pull the signs. And it's not like if, if we're able to accommodate other traffic, I, I'm not trying to hog the road necessarily. And it's just, it's literally for this one truck that's coming. So it's, it's not a major deal, but I just wanted to make the village aware and ask for permission before kind of blocking off that portion of the street.
Okay. Joe?
So what houses is, is, they got the fire chief, so what house is it?
Two thirty Billstad Road.
So is that the first one they just built?
Yeah. Yeah.
So there's houses at the other end of that street that we need EMS and fire access to?
Yeah.
So if there's a semi parked in that road, we can get down to the other end of that road?
Yes, we're not going to be unloading anything in the road. It's, it's really just to make that corner, just, there's a retaining wall
Yeah.
at the corner that we're having kind of trouble with.
But where's the truck going to be parked when you go down to that house? Is it going to be in the driveway or is it going to be on Billstad Road?
It's going to actually be, there's a, a lower, I don't know if I called it a driveway, but there's a lower access
Yeah.
that we're doing a project. So they're actually going to pull into that gravel area, and that's where we're going to do all the unloading off the street.
So you're just turning the corner
Yeah.
so we'll quite even close up, I guess.
Just because we've been having trouble with the drivers being able to make the corner. And so they've been there for kind of a longer period of time, just trying to be able to navigate that corner.
Well, just as long as the road doesn't stay blocked, we can have access for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, it's not the intention to fully block the road. It, it's quite literally just to facilitate this delivery.
Okay.
Plus, you know, October fourteenth.
You could grant this. I was just looking at the conditions that we have in our ordinance for this. You could grant this, and then in the event of an emergency, a law enforcement officer can terminate it immediately if necessary.
Just as long as it's not obstructed, and once the truck gets off the road, down near the next side will be moved until we come back out.
Yeah, we can do that.
So
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right. All those in favor of granting this request, which, I forget where it's at.
Street use permit.
Street use permit for Kayla Sipple, South Central Landscapes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Passes, but please keep in mind what Joe's talking about here for
Did you want staff to send a notice to the neighbors?
Yeah, could you send a notice to the neighbors at the end of the road, just letting them know during that two-hour timeframe that ingress and egress may be
Limited.
It's not like it's going to be blocked for the entire two hours. It's just going to be as it's
But if they're going to work and it's closed for two hours, that can create a problem for going to work.
As it's moving.
Okay. All right. Okay. Let's move on. Committee assignments, which is item eight C, trustee positions. What have we got here, Lisa?
So I kind of did a memo. We have a number of things. The memo's in your packet. The first, having a new board member. As you recall, back in July, other board members still temporarily, the positions vacated when trustee Whit were left. So now that trustee Crackwell's with us, committee assignments can be revisited. I do have in your packet to the list of the, you know, who was filling temporary. He does not have to necessarily fill those that trustee Whit were had. And as always, these will be reviewed again come April. He did express an interest in the Dane County Cities and Villages Association, economic development, licensing. We did talk some about joint law enforcement, police, so
Chris, do you want to stay on licensing? I mean, you were put on temporary, but I'm on licensing. So I would, I mean, either, if you don't want to stay on it, or if you want to stay on it, it's your call.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So licensing?
I know I'm in the hot seat. I'm here to help, so I have a wide range. So like I said, a lot of opportunities, trying to help you guys out. You guys have been covering a lot of other roles, so.
So you like Dane County Cities and Villages Association? You'd like to do that one?
Yep.
I'm on that one.
I was on it for a while, it was great.
Yeah, but I, you know, enthusiasm really counts here.
I speak at the annual conference every year and do a few other things for them, so.
I'd be happy to have you take over for me on that one. And I know I'm on there for Plan Commission, I like to stay on. So we just swap roles, or I'll give you mine. Dane County Cities and Villages Association.
So I know you expressed an interest in economic development. I'm new to that board this year. Don't feel I have a lot to bring to that board, although I've enjoyed being on that board. But if you have a strong interest in being on that board, acceptable to giving that up if you want it. Otherwise, I'm good staying on too.
If it would ease up you, I think I would bring a lot to that board, so.
Yeah. Well, I think if you only got a lot to bring, I think that'd be great.
Think it'd be a great idea to connect with a lot of people in the community too, and some of the outside interests, so. If that works for you.
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So anybody want to make a motion here for, for Brian on these committees?
I'll make a motion to add Brian to the Licensing Committee. The Economic, or Economic Development Committee, as well as what's one you are?
Dane County Cities and Villages Association.
As well as the Dane County Cities and Villages Association.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're on. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Committee assignments, we took care of trustee, Plan Commission.
So as you know, Tara Maholsky has resigned her position. And Eric had been on that. Mark has filled that position. Just a little background. Back when Eric left, we did post the village board position with both Economic Development and Plan Commission. We did post those positions as well, that they were open. Jenny Landowski did submit her interest in serving on the Plan Commission at that time. I did when she said she was a licensed architect. We do need a licensed architect on historical too, and so she did agree to be on that too. But she is still interested in that Plan Commission position. In your packet, I included the appointments. It is the president or his designate. That designate is the chairperson of the committee by our ordinances. So again, we can change things up a little if, but Mark is interested as staying on that. So there is the one citizen member that is available. I know the board had talked about some other possibles at the last meeting, which I wasn't yet, but
Lisa, a question, was there any other applications that were submitted for that?
Not for Plan Commission.
In the, in the deadline that we requested?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion here for
Jenny?
Jenny?
Jenny, uh, Jennifer Landowski. Pat Eschner, Landowski. I just met her. She's doing a good job on the historic structures committee.
Historic preservation.
Yes, preservation. Need a motion, anybody?
Make a motion to approve Jenny Landowski to the plan, village plan commission.
Okay.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, carries. All right, thank you, Chuck.
Little tired, Chuck. Give you a minute.
I know. Okay. Economic Development Committee.
So there are currently two vacancies on that. I did include, um, previous ordinance. These positions are dictated by ordinance who's supposed to fill them. We haven't always been able to fill them. We can move things around a little bit. We did have to, like I said, we posted this, we did receive interest from two people to, um, be on this committee. John Scott, Kayla Sipple. Neither fits the vacancies that we have. We can move around, we can change our ordinance to state, if we can fill these positions with, you know, a banking or real, real estate. If not, a resident or business owner could fill. We had changed the ordinances a little bit to state the businesses had to be within a half mile radius. We could change that to a broader radius, or to business owners within the Cambridge School District, or something along those lines, um, to give us a little more flexibility in filling the positions.
I hate to turn away volunteers.
Yeah.
You know? Able to focus on them.
But I also think it's important that who, people who are on the Cambridge Economic Development Committee are either residents of Cambridge, or have some sort of vested interest in Cambridge. So, a, and I, I understand we have a broader area, but I would want to make sure that if the Economic Development Committee had a con, had a conflict with Oakland about something, if the person on our committee lived in Oakland, I would want to make sure that they were, took the Cambridge side of things and not the Oakland side of things. You know, so these are just considerations that I would want to make sure we had.
I know that I have seen both John and Kayla at the, what is it, the Wednesday morning wake-up, and they have both been, um, prepared, and they share their, uh, their opinions here on how to make Cambridge, you know, more healthy economically, add to the vitality. I think both of them would be great additions. Brian, they are sitting right there, raise your hands.
But Kayla's been on the committee before, so, and she had a number of, she actually chaired the committee. Because she had a number of really great suggestions. And is your business no longer within half a mile of Cambridge?
No, we still are, but that is why we had to change the ordinance, because we're technically just over the line.
The two vacancies right now are one member from real estate or retail, and a member from legal or banking industry are the two vacancies
Got it.
that are currently there. And that's set by state statute, or by our ordinances, membership.
Okay.
So, so, in... So do we change, sorry?
Sure, come on up, John.
So, I, I don't think, I think everybody thinks you'd be great, both of you'd be great on the committee. I think the issue is how do we change the ordinance so that it, so we don't have to change it every single time?
We, we have willing volunteers.
Very unflexible, and the way business is being done more, these people are here online. Business is being done in the community, the... It's very normal, and we have to keep changing the ordinance every time, that seems to be...
Yeah, but I'm trying to balance that with the point you made earlier in that we want it to be narrow in certain ways, it sounds like, is, is the direction. I mean, I want to make sure whoever's on the committee has a vested interest in Cambridge. Cambridge proper, because this is a Cambridge proper committee.
Mr. Scott, perhaps you could share your thoughts on this?
For those of you who I've not met, I'd like to introduce myself. I am your convention and visitors bureau. My wife and I run a website, visit cambridgewi.com. It gets tens of thousands of views. It is the village's local events website, and it's our tourism. We have supported this website with outdoor advertising. Last summer, we bought television time in the Rockford metro area promoting Cambridge tourism. I'm going to have an office in the new pop-up holiday market that's in Awards Mercantile. I'm going to sit there all day and work. To say that my wife and I have a vested interest in Cambridge would be a grand understatement. We've lived here three years and seven months, so we're new. But forty years from now, when I pass away, they're going to say at my funeral, "Well, John and Cindy were new, you know, to Cambridge."
I've, I've been here for, like, over twenty-five years, and I'm still new.
Right.
Yeah.
When we moved here, we decided to dive in. We've lived in big cities most of our life, and we understand that the impact that one can make in a place like this, a small town, can have tremendous reverberations. You can get stuff done in a smaller town. It's not always so easy to get done in a big city. And we've sort of embraced that. We're Lions Club members. I'm on the board of directors of CD Players. So we have really tried to weave ourselves into the fabric, and I love this place, and we're never leaving. And we are unabashed supporters of this proper village of Cambridge, which I tend to spend more time in at the coffee shops than I do at my own home office. But, uh, I appreciate the needing to change, and that's not convenient. I understand that, but in Kayla and I, you have two people who will give you all of our energies and all of our ideas. We don't have an outsized view of our influence. We're just here to help. And we're really looking forward to it, if you'll have us.
Maybe that is the right standard, the vested interest. To get at the, you know, the geographical location maybe doesn't make sense now in the day of online businesses. But I, it seems like that's, that's the language that you're looking for, right? If, to propose in an ordinance change, you want the business to be, to have a vested...
If the person doesn't necessarily live in the village or in that area, right, but they're doing business.
We live right off of Ripley Road, the lake, um, so we're pretty close. I think we appreciate that. Economic development can bring revenue. And we've heard tonight that we have some revenue challenges. And if we think smart and plan smart, and offer this board of trustees good ideas, and do some of the lifting for you in advance, um, if we bring you good ideas, that good things will come as a result of it.
What we could do procedurally, since we don't have the ordinance change on the agenda, is just to approve these two conditional upon a, a...
Future.
A future agenda item, or, I think that makes sense. We, we don't even have to put a date on it, but we could have it at the next meeting, a future. Yeah, so then you don't have to come again and make, even though your spiel was wonderful, but we could save you the trouble.
Thanks.
Okay.
But I would, you know, and that's kind of why I did this direction from you, how you'd want to see an ordinance change. You know, if we easing up on the categories is one issue. If they can't be filled by somebody within those professions, or, um, and then second, the residents or the...
The vested interest in Cambridge, verbiage.
Okay.
Would it be inappropriate to have the Economic Development Committee provide a draft back to us?
Well, we can do that.
It's easy enough for us to change.
Yeah, I think it's just like the words, I think, because what, what you had in the packet, I think, looks, looks fine. It's almost like, um, you know, village resident, owner, work for a business within the village limits, or have a vested interest for the, uh, for the village of Cambridge.
Economic development.
Within a half-mile thing, kind of maybe take that part off and just say, or have a vested interest in the...
Economic development of...
Economic development of Cambridge.
Okay. Does anybody care to make a motion?
And then, um, the, the second issue is the categories that we have listed. Do we want to, you know, if we can fill them from those positions, otherwise someone else who meets the other requirements, um...
Is that the legal or banking community piece?
So the banking, or the attorney, or the real estate, um, retail.
Can we just say business owner? Can we just leave it as a blanket business owner?
Definitely.
And whether it's online, I mean, it didn't...
And for representatives of the community and business interests, just take out the, including at least one member from real estate, and at least one member from small business or team, and at least one member. So just take out, out, all those...
Remove the clarifying.
That whole, oh, yeah, because they specify out three, so just take that out, and, and then we're fine. And then we get into the whole, what we talked about vested interest and such.
Yeah.
We got a forty-year commitment here, so.
And just to be clear, also removing the geographic scope then?
Yeah.
Yeah, got it.
They still have to come before the board showed that, and that has to be approved, so.
Okay.
In the meantime, Mike Jane said we could approve their appointments upon approval of the ordinance changes.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Scott and Kayla Sipple to the Economic Development Committee contingent on the re, the adoption of the arri, revised, uh, ordinance, uh, zero, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
All right, Chris, you get the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries, thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Okay, so if we put that on our next agenda, does that mean that the next Economic Development Committee meeting, they're actually not members of yet? Because you won't have met yet?
I would think so.
We won't have passed the ordinance yet.
We won't have passed, so they won't be members, but I would encourage them to go anyway, just so that they know it's going on.
And participate to them.
They just can't officially vote on anything.
Yep.
Okay. All right, you're good. John, thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
Kayla?
Thank you.
Johnny, welcome to the radio voice development.
All righty.
Boy, there's going to be three newbies on it.
Chuck, you doing okay over there?
Touch and goes, touch and goes.
Chuck, yeah, okay. All right, I know you've been up early, so we'll, we'll try to get going here. Unfinished business, Dancing Goat sampling plan.
Matt, and I can take this, and also we've got Mr. Dotson here, uh, in the audience. I could, maybe I'll just start, um, because what you have in front of you is an, a slightly modified version that we just got, I just got today from Bill Nelson, who is the attorney for Dancing Goat, who we've been working with. And I can just sort of explain some of the changes, and what Bill told me was the basis for some of the changes. I think most of them are within your policy discretion, you know, consistent with our ordinance, but there's just a couple points that we'll just want to talk about that are maybe important, uh, for you as decision makers to think about. One in particular, um, but as we go through this, so you all have the red line version in front of you, and I'll just kind of go through, um, the changes and why, what Bill told me.
They may need a kind of basic, how it's changed to...
Background of the whole document.
Background of the whole document, maybe first.
The cleaning now, you know, how it has kind of shifted from the original, so it's been to Water and Sewer. I don't know if the full board has that background?
Yeah, so initially, this sampling was all put in place because there were offsets at the plant. And so there was proposals to stamp, to sample their waste. And that was all their waste. We kind of, we don't know exactly how the offset happened, but one potential source would be the cleaning tanks that they have. So they installed, uh, some flow meters and also sampling ports. And we went back and forth and put together this plan. So instead of a full-on sampling station, um, and flow meter, and everything that flows out the door, this is sampling specific waste that we think could potentially upset the plant.
Yeah, and that's a, it's a little bit of a change from what you saw at Water and Sewer, because we just got these, these changes today in, in one of the...
You, you had the non-red line version at Water and Sewer. Let me just receive the red line.
Okay, so, and yeah, that's the biggest issue, and maybe that makes sense to just talk about that first instead, to take them in order, because that, that's the biggest change, the biggest policy decision for the board to make. We want to sample the...
Get some more background on this before you... I'm wondering, has Dancing Goat been involved in the draft of this?
This is the red line that Dancing Goat submitted today.
Okay.
So, uh, what I'm going to, what I'm going to just share is kind of the big picture feedback that Dancing Goat has shared about, like, the big picture of what they'd like to see versus what, um, what was, what Water and Sewer we're looking at. And I think probably the biggest issue is, do we sample the universe of everything that you see on the first page of that, of the wastewater that Dancing Goat generates? Or do we just sample those parameters that had a hit, um, at the COWC? And so that, that is an issue that I think is, is within your discretion. You know, you, the ordinance allows you to require a sampling plan, and I, you know, you can decide whether you want to have them sample everything, or whether you just want to focus, as they're requesting, on the parameters that, um, were issues, um, of concern. So I'll, I'll, to be fair to Dancing Goat, I'll just share, and Sean, please chime in if I, if you feel like I'm misrepresenting any of this. But what I heard from Bill Nelson to say was, you know, today, he said, you know, to be looking at these other waste streams is inconsistent with what the purpose of this wastewater sampling plan was all about, which he would say, you know, the purpose of this was to address the main problem that required us to sample in the first place. And this, he thinks, creates a lot of open-ended requirements that invite scrutiny unnecessarily when we haven't seen problems. The counterargument, you know, of course, would be that if we do have a hit and we don't have sampling, you know, we don't have an immediate enforcement mechanism available to us because we don't have causation. And so, um, you know, I, I think there's a judgment call to be made, and either approach could be, could be reasonable. Bill Nelson, oh, I can tell you want to say something, Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can then require sampling and flow metering at that time.
You always could, the village, because that's allowed under ordinance, the village could always decide, "Okay, we've got a, a hit of a new parameter that we hadn't seen before. Let's, you know, let's amend the, the sampling plan to include that." That's definitely an option, yeah.
So, I would say I went out to their site. We also talked to COWC. We understand their system a little bit better, and some of the provisions that they're making to prevent waste from going down this, down the pipe. And then also at COWC, they haven't had any major upsets this year. So, um, I, I think just the talking itself has gone a long way. And overall, we aren't sampling everything, but the intent of this plan would be sampling what we think potentially is impacting the plant.
So Bill, let me know if this helps you. I, I think that is, for me, it's the easiest way to kind of describe the sampling plan is to, like, weigh the two options in each of these categories that we have to consider, and I, that's, that's the biggest one. Yeah.
For some of you who haven't worked, Matt is one of our engineers with Town and Country. Tommy's been working on this with MSA. MSA, I'm sorry, we were talking about Town and Country today with other stuff we're looking at, so I apologize. With MSA. So he's been working with us since Dan Greavy has retired. He kind of took this over and has been working with us.
And it sounds like things have gone pretty collaboratively in the back and forth. It, it sounds from my, from what I've heard, that, that you two have been working together very well. So.
I know. I haven't even had a chance to look.
COWC has experienced spikes these last couple of months. Our facility is down with production right now, so we're happy to abide by this, but this has been a very, very long tail of finger painting. I'd like to just move forward, so.
I understand that, but I'm wondering if it makes more sense for us at this time to refer this back to Water and Sewer, because they haven't had a chance to actually look at this.
That's definitely a possibility. That is what Bill Nelson requested. If, if the village board didn't feel comfortable approving the changes that, that he just sent today, because Water and Sewer hadn't had a chance to digest them, that's definitely a possibility. And maybe if, if I could talk to somebody on Water and Sewer and just share more details, if that makes more sense than talking to the whole group here about what Bill was sharing as the basis for each of those.
Just as a matter of form, like what Water and Sewer approved on August 20th versus what was provided in the board packet, that's different. So it has changed. So even before our red line edits today, there were modifications made in the document, so.
I'm inclined to just give it to Water and Sewer, because they have the expertise, you know, the kind of generalist stuff here. So, anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
Do we need a motion, or can we just refer it to committee?
Oh, you can refer it.
Yeah, without, because you're not taking action.
Yeah, we're not taking action, so refer it to committee.
Okay.
While we have Matt here, I mean, I just, I just don't want to waste the, the opportunity to have Matt here and talk about any, I mean, maybe if we're taking it to Water and Sewer, that's a.
And Sean, if you have anything to add.
Yeah.
Matt, are you looking at this from a, like a, like a crawl, walk, run kind of thing? So we, we sample from the area that we, from my understanding, is, is where the issues were at COWC, and we have the capability within our ordinance to ramp it up if, if need be, right?
Yeah, exactly. So I believe the approach of the agreement is sampling what we think is the problem. And then if an upset occurs at the plant, then we can then talk about future approaches.
And does that make sense to you?
Yes, Chris, I would just encourage you as the, the Water and Sewer lead to, again, recognize our facility is down right now, and COWC has experienced spikes. So we've gotten this mode where if there's an issue there, it has to be Dancing Goat. And I would encourage you guys as, as community leaders, you need to think more broadly about the system.
Sounds good, sounds good. All right.
Matt, you're an engineer.
Yeah, wastewater engineer.
I had asked this once before and they're really unanswered. But next time there's a peak, couldn't we take samples and send that to some state-of-the-art lab and have them break down exactly what's causing and what the ingredients are, and then look for those ingredients versus just pointing fingers willy-nilly around the community?
Yeah, well, one, I guess I don't really know what a peak or an upset means exactly, right? So there's, there's a lot of things that could happen. If you talk to Steve at CWOC, he, he says that there's a drop in DO, which means that stronger wastewater is coming in potentially. The problem is that he might see it in his plant, but the influent wastewater is already going through it, so you actually can't take a sample. So part of a sampling plan is to sample it continuously or as it's coming down the pipe before it hits the plant. And then if the plant is upset, you have samples, you know, around, around the area.
You'll have samples to know what's killing off the bugs and, and whatnot, so.
Exactly.
But the problem with the sampling now, we're only sampling one business now.
Yep, yep. And, and I mean, that's, that's a question, and wastewater has made up a lot of different things. A lot of times, domestic strength waste is considered commercial, residential, but not industrial, right? So in that plan, there is language in there that we could sample rid of a manhole outside their property and see what's actually coming down the pipe. So that's a possibility as well.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I think you know what we're gonna do. Okay, let's move on to item nine B, unfinished business, fire commission update, and then we've got the fourth quarter dues.
The update would have been me reporting on the budget, but it was, that meeting was very short-lived because of posting issues. It wasn't properly posted, so it was wrapped up pretty quick. There was afterward some, some emails sent out to pay some specific bills that the president just approved and said, pay him. We do have a, an agenda that was just sent out for next Monday, so we'll try it again next Monday. And in that, we'll, we'll discuss budgetary items and from both fire and EMS.
Is that properly posted?
Not yet. It was just sent to Tammy and Lisa today. It will be, though, I would imagine.
When is that gonna be?
Monday, at the town of Christiana at 18, or 6:00 PM.
Six, not six thirty?
Six PM.
And we do not have a meeting this week.
Yeah, I know.
No.
Yeah, all right.
Mark, can I ask, I'm sorry, Mr. President, are you speaking to the mediation meeting that was scheduled? There's not going to be one?
No, the mediation has been canceled.
Okay. Well, good luck on Monday, 6 o'clock. Join Chris out in Christiana, 6:00 PM. Under here, we still have payment of the fourth quarter dues.
Just like, can I back up and we say why mediation was canceled?
Yeah, I.
You can do that because.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to think about an appropriate version for.
I just feel like a public session, yeah.
I think, I mean, this is a matter of public record, that there was an exchange of emails among the villages saying that they didn't think there was a path forward. The purpose of the mediation wasn't to, to, you know, the mediation request that we had made for years, you know, the disputes about how the IGA was being implemented was not the purpose of the meeting on Thursday. It was only to come up with a prospective or a potential new IGA, and it didn't seem like there was a possibility, the municipalities didn't think that there was a, a path forward because of the deal breakers.
Okay. All right, now we're back on to payment of the fourth quarter dues. This is.
We pay them 60 days after they're received? Isn't that what we do?
That's what the IGA says, correct?
Yep.
When did we get them?
Bill said to October 1st.
I mean, the IGA says quarterly, and so that can be something different than when we receive them in 60, 60 days. So there, I mean, there are two possible readings of the IGA, to be fair, but it does say 60 days. It also says quarterly, which, I guess my only point is, if it's quarterly, it can't be more, it, it can't be earlier than the end of each quarter without making it more frequent than a quarter. Did that make any sense at all? Okay. Okay.
Doesn't the IGA also state that that has to be, is the payment schedule has to be established at the first meeting?
Yes, it is. Yep.
And that was never done? That was never done?
That's right. Yep, so three sort of flaws there.
So then, with that knowledge, what have we done in the past? Have we paid it quarterly for this year?
We have, we, I think that's that timeline, the last one, we paid at the end of the quarter. The earlier one, we, second quarter, we made two payments, one earlier on, and the second.
If you look at the last.
Later on.
That's listed out actually in that document, in our, in our packet.
Oh, yeah, it has the dates.
Because there's language that says, payments that are late may be charged interest at the rate of 18% per annum, to be determined by the commission. Yeah, that's been compelling in the past, even if we thought there was a dispute about whether it is payable at that time.
That's after 60 days, correct?
Well, well, I mean, depending on which, which interpretation you take. I mean, there is one interpretation that says, after the, the quarter is over, and then, and then the payments are late, then, then the interest can accrue. If the, if the invoices have come out in something less than a quarter, then I think there's a good argument that the 18% really has not accrued. But we haven't wanted to have that paid, I think.
We have, we have not traditionally paid on the first day of, of the quarter. We have not traditionally paid on the first day of the quarter in our three previous payments, which is, October 1st would be the first day of the quarter that they're saying it's due. That is not when the other three payments that we have paid. So by precedent's sake, if those weren't considered late, and if we don't pay on October 1st, I don't see how they could consider that late.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to pay our fourth quarter dues no later than October 15th, 2024, for fire and EMS services.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of paying our dues by October 15th, 2024 for the fourth quarter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Carrie's.
Do you want me to just include it in our next bill for our next board meeting?
So it's whatever's easiest for you. I'm not trying to add, add more work on to it, but just let's get it paid, get it out of our head.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, correspondence, none, so we don't have to take that up. Questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items?
We have some there.
Yeah, we've got a couple new ones. Room tax ordinance coming up, Dr. Banker, October 22nd, room tax ordinance.
Yeah, we only need one.
It's doubly important.
Yeah, I'm just reading here. You're right. And bike trail, financial update, proclamation for trustee Whitwer. Bill, you wanted to have the financials.
The audit, or the.
Reporting.
Ordinance, right? 65.90? Is that a Wisconsin statute? So two alpha and two bravo, or four bravo?
Are the two that specifically I'm concerned about. It's a lack of communication to our taxpayers on what exactly we're doing as a village.
Okay. All right, we'll get that on there. And then we also had changes to our Economic Development Committee composition, correct? Are there any other items?
We want a.
Or a personnel.
Personnel meeting.
Personal meeting, and that can be future meetings to be determined.
And then also this Dancing Goat distillery proposed, after it goes through Water and Sewer, we probably need to have it back on our agenda.
Yep. Chuck, did you have a future agenda item?
Yeah, as you guys said, if we get others out for a board meeting to talk this through, you know, for the next budget for next year, preferably before public works and audit finance to discuss the budget, that'd be great. And also, Lisa, if we can get a public works meeting scheduled.
Yep.
With Todd, for turnover stuff, and I'd like to get some budget information from him as well before he departs.
Okay.
All right. And if anybody has anything else that they would like to, to see added, please contact Lisa. Okay, upcoming meetings, October 1st, Economic Development, the 8th is the Village Board, the 9th, the Library Board, the 14th, Plan Commission, 15th is Water and Sewer, and October 22nd, again, is the Village Board, which takes us.
What?
And October 22nd is also a historic preservation.
Oh, yes.
And I'm assuming we're gonna need to have an audit and finance meeting in October to start talking about budget? So that'll be, to be determined.
Yeah, personnel. All right, that takes us up to item 13.
All right.
Hi, Chris, it's all you.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to convene into closed session per 19.851 ECHO deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Fire and EMS commission and 19.851 Gulf confronting with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Fire and EMS commission and per 19.851 Charley of the Wisconsin statutes to consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of village employees' reviews.
I will second.
All right, roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Freckler.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Melissa, you can.